Should be noted, those in attendance are Councilperson Heck, Councilperson Slusman, Councilperson Morrow, Councilperson Malcolm, Councilperson Landed, City Administrator Steve Beck. The attorneys were given the night off because there is no WRH report, so based on that, you're not going in closed sessions. You have twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four off your agenda. Uh, Mayor's here. City Park Senator Walton's here. I'd like to remind all in attendance, including the council and staff, please shut off your cell phones or put them on mute mode. With that being said, let's rise for the ladies.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Consent Agenda, Council Minutes of December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and bills received. Discussion on any of those items. Hearing none, looking for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda, Council Minutes of December twenty-first, and bills received.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
It moved and seconded, further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, five zero. Resident comments. Any residents out there who wish to make comments to the council before the meeting tonight? Seeing none, we will move beyond that. Let's go to Park and Recreation Department's annual report, Lance Higginson.
All right, well, I think everybody has my report, I've had it before. Um, I'll just basically go through the report, give anything else extra to it that might be there. Receipts were all pretty much the equivalent to years previous. Um, the pool rental, our pool parties, we had one every Friday and Saturday throughout the season this year. Um, it might, it might have been maybe one day that there wasn't one, but uh, they're pretty, almost all the way booked before the pool even opened. Uh, special events is the Fourth of July, which is Dollar Swim, and then the longest day of the year. Um, let's see, so total receipts ended up being thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, season pass sales were pretty equivalent to years past. Altogether, there was a hundred thirty-one season passes worth of just over fourteen thousand dollars there. Um, next page shows receipts month to month. Seven thousand dollars receipts in June, uh, seven and a half thousand dollars receipts in July, and just over twenty-three hundred dollars of receipts in, in August. Um, below that shows daily. And then below that was uh, uh, dates that we were open. Um, there were seventy-three total days in the pool season. We had a one day closed for weather, and four days closed early due to low attendance. Um, low attendance usually, try to stay open till at least three, three-thirty if there's less than ten kids in the pool. Um, we get the option to close, and usually they still stay open. If there's ten, but if there's like two or three, it, it's just probably not a good day to really be open. We're not, we're just gonna be wasting money, pretty much. Um, but I try to, I try to tell them to keep it open as much as possible. Um, and then if there is weather, they always communicate with me on what they think they should do, and generally I'll make the, the call from that. So seventy-three days of pools open, uh, sixty-eight, we're, we are open June, June third through the, through August fourteenth. On the next page shows concessions, expenses, uh, we're seven and a half thousand dollars. Um, receipt show just over eleven and a half. Um, remember from last year, this is a lot better number than we had previously. Um, I think it helped with, yeah, I hired a, a, a teacher from another school district that was in there quite a bit, helping the kids, was helping me with the ordering and stuff when I wasn't able to be around, and I think that showed um, quite a bit. I mean, we only made half of that, around half of that last year, so um, changes were made and, and it seemed to work for the most part.
Do you want to track wages um, tied to that type of concession?
Uh, I just included wages in, let's see, on the next page with all the lifeguards and stuff at the very top there. If you would like me to, I could do that separate.
I just wondered, you know, this is just the product.
Yeah, that's just product.
Profit on the product.
Yeah.
Doesn't have any labor tied to it, so.
Okay. On the next page shows all of our, on the last page shows all of our operational expenses. On uh, the middle column, I have what was budgeted, all the way to the right is what was expended. Um, to go to building repair and maintenance, um, opening and closing the pool, we're over budget. Uh, chemicals went over budget, the price on chemicals had uh, gone up quite a bit. Um, and then with the opening, closing the pool and the repair and maintenance uh, at the beginning, or right before the pool was scheduled to open, um, Jay and I detected some leaks. Steve, Jay and I did a lot of work up there, um, early mornings, late nights, type of stuff to try to get the pool going. Um, Jay did a really good job at, on, there to go, because I don't know, I would have no idea. He play better than I do. Um, but we were able to, I would say, pretty much, keep it, I don't know.
Keep it contained.
Yeah, kept it contained for the whole pool year. Um, so, I mean, he was tearing out concrete, digging rock, I mean, there's four inches of concrete, then unlimited amount of rock underneath that, um, just to try to find where leaked, where we sent cameras through, um, and stuff like that, to try to figure it out. So, um, those were some, those were the main issues up there this year, this um, spring when we first started to, to um, get the pool started. Um, Jay spent quite a bit of time helping me up there at the pool this year. He's kinda, I would say he knows it like the back of his hand, pretty much.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but uh.
So Lance, under the, the open and close pool expanded, that includes the labor, like for Jay and for you or for Jay? Is that why it's up so much higher?
What was that?
No.
I would say that, that's probably just from, what would be from the?
From the carts and.
We had that scope up there, that scope down.
And you had um, acolytics come out a couple of times.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, this should probably, when you compare the budgeted to the expended, that should really help you with next budget time, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, having the right credit there.
Well, in spite of all the differences, if you look at the budgeted versus the expended, it was pretty damn close.
Yeah.
In fact, you're on your just a little bit.
Yeah, I was on your just over a hundred bucks.
Good, you know.
But um, then so, uh, taking total expenses minus the poor receipts and minus concession receipts, it equals out to be a total operational loss of fifty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents, which in my time here has been the highest.
I think in our time here, it's going down.
Yeah, he's probably right.
Since I've been here, it's been everywhere from about forty, it's probably about the.
Forty's really good.
Yeah.
I think, I think last year, or maybe a couple of years ago, we, I was at forty-two.
This is the first year we started tracking the water usage.
Yeah.
Eight thousand gallons a day before we fixed the water.
Before we found the issue.
Do we have stuff to dig in the spring to fix before we open up again?
We got a few things we want to fix. We're not a hundred percent sure if we'll be doing any, we might dig, but we might not. It's.
Well, we have an idea what we want to fix.
Kinda know where we wanna go, but we're gonna start just a hair bit earlier this year.
Yeah.
When we're on pause.
We hadn't been doing this all in-house, I need to think what the cost would have been.
Yeah.
And then some of them prices, or some of that money, is for some parts that I haven't even put in yet, that I won't put in until spring if we just order, so we have, so. There's some valves and stuff that are still leaking and.
Also, I was gonna ask Mayor, is what we thought that that would've cost us without Jay on board, how much money did that, did that save us? You know, I mean.
I, I'll throw out a figure, a hundred thousand dollars, because I, the pool company is.
Pool companies are expensive, everything they do.
And did we start a week late then?
We opened, was it, I think it was six days.
Was it six?
I think it was six, yeah, I think it was six days. We were supposed to open Memorial Day. Or no, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't like four, I think it was, maybe Memorial Day we were supposed to open, and then we opened that.
Usually you open.
Oh, that's Saturday. Yeah. So, and then we opened up the following Friday.
So that cost us some money right there. I, I wouldn't hate to even fathom what this would.
They wouldn't have found it.
I mean, I'd go up there.
Uh, I mean, it was dropping.
We had stuff dug up all over.
Six inches overnight, I think, some of that.
It was dropping pretty good.
How long?
Yeah. So.
And it was, we were pretty creative on getting cameras in there.
Yeah.
Where we were borrowing cameras from, I was impressed with how it worked, with our own skills at figuring out. I think we got a much greater idea now how the stupid things put together.
Yeah.
Trust me, there was some pipes that the guys looked like they were just slopping stuff on the joints down. They were never put together. The way you would expect if you had a plumber come into your own house and was putting down one pipe, so.
Well, if I remember right, I think Dyzer had similar issues this year too.
I think, I think right, you can imagine pool company.
They were losing a lot.
No.
The pool company said they thought that was just evaporation.
Like, they all.
They said they all leaked that much. Like, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Six inches.
Why, six inches overnight?
If you get away with it.
You leaking eight percent of your total volume a day?
Maybe a gallon.
Don't worry about it, you're just evaporating that much. Kids are shaking it off when they rub on the concrete.
Two days after I noticed it happened, two days in a row, I think I called them, I was like, wait, there's an issue here. Can I get this figured out? So, I mean, that's quite a bit of, I mean, six inches in the pool is a lot of water to lose.
Take forever to fill up.
Yeah.
Well, Lance has gotta tech me, he can get it filled up.
I don't do that anymore.
He's just south into town, so it looks.
That's creepy.
That was my first year. I did exactly what the.
I know, I read the. Since use, use always filled the pool. Didn't say guard, just said use.
Yeah.
I have a question on, did we go longer into August this year than we typically do?
We ended the same weekend.
Oh, I was thinking for some reason that we closed earlier usually, but.
No, usually right around the middle of August, we start losing my college kids.
Okay.
Then, and um, if, but this year, it was hard to keep a full staff every day. Um, even gave um, some raises for starting wages for lifeguards to try to get in, because I was having a really hard time getting lifeguards. Um, there was actually, I, I saw during the summer that there was a national shortage for lifeguards everywhere this year. I know uh, some secret harvest pools didn't even open, and couldn't get the help.
And there were, well, Williamsburg wasn't open on Monday.
They, yeah, they had some schedule where they weren't open on certain days and, and stuff, because they just couldn't staff, staff it appropriately. Um, which we were luckily able to every day, but um, it was getting close to, I was thinking we might have to only be open half of the day on certain days of the week. This, okay, I mean, the kids being out in the sun, their swim lessons from nine AM to, and then they have a pool party till nine PM. I mean, that's a lot of sun and for it to be just in, in every day, I, I didn't wanna, I didn't want them to get burned out and then not wanna come back, you know? Um, but, we were able to make it work, so that was good.
How were we on participation in our other park and rec activity?
Um, I didn't do an exact um, comparison, but I know that we were pretty close. I know Little League stuff was, there was, I mean, I had almost two teams in every division, um, except for two divisions, I think. So altogether, that'd be, I think, six teams, or no, no, it would be eight teams altogether. Um, that's first through sixth grade altogether. Um, T-ball is about the same. Um, had a big influx in um, flag football this year. I had roughly around forty kids before I, anywhere from, let's say twenty-five to thirty-five, thirty-five on a good year. Um, our uh, volleyball program that started two seasons ago, um, they only had one team. Previous year, had two this year. Um, but overall, I would say like the numbers were pretty, probably pretty consistent uh, last year.
Would Park and Rec be opposed if the city council broke your use more park land? I haven't brought it to the council yet, but Steve and I have started.
But no location.
Next one.
A convenient location.
Yeah.
That's.
I know what you're talking about, yes.
Okay.
For sure.
I talked to you once before.
Yeah, okay, then yes.
Talk seriously to the council at the next meeting. Uh, Steve and I have already discussed with, and apartments brought to us by the public, but I think there's a prime time for the city to grab, get some land that should be in the city's hands.
I would agree with you. I think that land could be utilized very well for that area.
Which brings up another, where are we at on our bathroom at Franklin Park?
I've been communicating with the um, oh, engineer, yeah, engineer. I want another blueprint diagram of the way that I would like it to be, so we can do easy fixes and stuff. Previous um, blueprint had plumbing on the inside walls. I've had issues at our park, plumbing on the inside walls with, them being ripped off the wall or, and stuff in the past. Um, there, I would like, kind of like a closet behind the restrooms, so, and all the plumbing comes through the wall into a sink or into a toilet. So if anything were to go wrong, it could all be fixed from a separate room that nobody else would be able to get into. Um, my board agreed on that idea, and also agreed on um, having a women's restroom, a men's restroom, and then a, like, family style restroom. Because there's so many, I've had so many issues with improper use of restrooms, I would like to have the family restroom open all the time, and then unlock the, the men's and women's for events and stuff, just because it would, it just, it's just more time to try to clean that stuff repeatedly and fix things. If, I mean, someone would take a brick and throw it on, into the toilet, it's not gonna be very easy cleanup and, and stuff, because I, I found sticks, uh, pot bottles and, and stuff, just throwing into toilets and trying to flush them, and it creates mess. So I, I think that having one restroom open all the time would maybe make the problem a little bit easier for me and my staff to do the cleaning and care of that. Um, I am really close to getting in contact with contractors and trying to get all that stuff figured out.
And I assume now we are gonna tear down the old one ourselves.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So that won't be an expense now.
They didn't have anything else to.
So Saturday, Friday, we can, we can experiment on our own stuff before we tear down some bigger stuff.
Maybe let me get an unloaders.
Got to take the last one.
Yeah, I know.
How much vandalism do we have?
Um, this year wasn't as bad as previous years. Uh, I think, I mean, other than people smoking cigarettes and throwing them in the toilets and sinks and stuff, um, I didn't have anything in restrooms. I didn't have sticks or anything. I did have a whole roll of toilet paper shoved in, um, one of the toilets, clogged it, but um, someone has had a lot of fun at one of the shelters, I think it was like the ice, or when they used to flood the creek or something at Franklin, one warm-up hut or something.
Yeah.
Someone's had a lot of fun down there, but spray paint, on the inside.
Spray paint.
There's nothing bad written or drawn.
Yeah, because there ain't.
It's well done, it's well done graffiti.
Whoever did the uh, the, the worm on the, on, before it was turned down, I thought, kids got talent. I don't know who's doing it, but somebody in town's pretty good.
Well, most of what you've mentioned, schools face that same thing when they.
Oh, well.
Get the activities, roll the toilet paper in the, in the toilet, dip the pop cans in the toilet, all that kind of stuff, so. To have open areas where people have access, and it's not like we have walking patrols in all of the areas.
Um, before the old junior high building was taken down over by Grand Park, there was every, so often there's new graffiti on the, on the walls on that school. Stuff.
You planted a bunch of trees again this year too.
I did plant a bunch. Last year was around fifty-five, fifty-four, something like that. Um, I think we lost maybe five or six of those. Some of them just didn't, haven't taken to the ground, and I would keep watering them, but hoping that maybe they'll come back, or, or maybe they're not quite dead yet, but, so out of the fifty-four, about five or six of them, I don't think that are gonna make it. Then, um, after watering all those and stuff, I like decided to go with eight here, because watering fifty-some plus eight more is, I mean, it takes me about three days to, to get it all done. Um, that's what, a truck and I got a big watering wagon that I can pull, but, I mean, it takes quite a bit of time. That's all crap, ready fed, so, I don't know more around that, but um, makes for a long, long mornings, I mean, sitting there watering them, but, um, yeah, takes a lot of time. So I only wanted to go with about eight, and I wanted to go with eight just to help maybe alleviate that, so after this spring, maybe this fall, those will all be fine kind of Franklin, and I can start working at other parks with those finally. Um, and not just focused on one spot, as far as trees go.
Well, it's just gonna take time to replace what we lost. It's not gonna happen in five years. It's gonna take a period of time before we even see the foliage, and some of us probably don't see much of that total canopy replacement. Uh, anything else for Lance?
Budget-wise on the bathroom, do you have, mind if you raise enough money, or?
Um, once that building comes down, we'll get um, money from uh, man's trust, that will, should complete the whole budget.
Okay, good.
Unless prices change, unless there's not a great show.
Well, it's a, whatever, however old that bed is, you can count and add twenty percent at least.
That's something I would like to see it done, seems possible.
Maybe the school would like to do a few, use their industrial class to build the bathroom.
That's a good idea.
Making up. Got it. Call the chat. Guys, any good at bathroom?
Well, there you'll get, they can do all of it. Just, I mean, carpentry work, plumbing, electric.
Your quote was for lane block, wasn't it?
Yeah. Some block work, roofing.
Check that out. Anything else for the park and rec department? I think you guys do a good job. I think you provide a very substantial uh, park and rec entertainment value for our kids and our adults, if you take into consideration the number of adults that use the pool. Uh, you know, I'm not sure what key is to break even on the swimming pool. I suppose you break prices up so high, nobody can afford it, or it's kinda like golf courses, those types of things that cities have discovered when they own them, but they just don't make money.
But I think the town made the commitment when they, the bond, the pool that's wanted, so as long as we can do the best that we can, I think we just accept it.
When it was built, they said if you could keep it around fifty thousand dollars a year lost, you'd be doing all right, and we're still hanging in there. So I think that's, and I'd also like to give Lance kudos for all the snow removal he's been helping with too.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's me, I'm really.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Thanks, Lance. Guys, have a good night.
You too. Thanks, Lance.
So I handed out some information there before the meeting, a pack of five or six different pages here. First couple, two or three, um, basically it's kind of an end of the year summary or activity and, and things that we've had going. Um, you can see at the top, dispatch, dispatch activity by type. Um, you can see at the top, dispatch dispatch activity by type. For whatever reason, it combined some of the metal stuff. Uh, they didn't intend to do, but it's there anyway. We just kind of give you a tally of some of the things that we dealt with the entire year of two thousand twenty-two. I think it's the fourth page here. There's an offense and arrest summary report. This essentially tells you, talks about our arrests, what they were for. Um, so the FBI requires that we that we report to them certain offenses. Um, and they refer to those as group A offenses, and those are listed in that that left hand column down each side there. So the interesting thing is, is this year we had seventy-one group A offenses reported. These are these are serious crimes essentially. So seventy-one doesn't sound like a lot. It's really not. Uh, in the grand scheme of things, you know, serious crime isn't something that we deal with a lot of. It's a lot of routine, you know, less serious stuff. But we had seventy-one group A offenses reported this year. Last year, we had a hundred and thirty-five. So I think that's a pretty big drop. That's a good thing, you know, your crime rate is going down. Um, the second column over here, the top says arrest reporting. This talks about the total group A arrests. Um, so that's again, that's just for those group A offenses. You know, we've had twenty-two this year, uh twenty-seven last year. Kind of food for thought. Following page, this is uh calls for service by day. Ever wondered what what day is the busiest day of the week for our department? It's Friday night, um followed by Saturday night. So just kind of kind of trivial information, but at the same time, it's kind of useful as well. And then we have calls for service by hour. If you wanted to know what the busiest time. Two thousand twenty-two, the busiest timeframe was between eight and nine o'clock. Three hundred and fifty-three calls for service between eight and nine o'clock. Um, the wee hours of the morning, one AM to, you know, six or seven, not so much. As you can imagine, it's not rock rocket science. Second shift has always been the busiest shifts, you know, people are gone at work during the day, they get home at night, start having problems, whatever. So there's that. And then the last page of it is essentially just a graph that shows you previous page of information. I wanted you guys to have a little bit of a wrap up for two thousand twenty-two, just to kind of see what we've been we've been doing. We had a busy year, but not as busy as the year prior. Uh, let's see, Andrew Bachelor was scheduled to attend the academy this week. He uh did do some physical agility tests, so he was not eligible to go. So we pushed him back. Uh, the plan now is to send him in summer, so starting in uh late April or early May. That's what I have for you.
Thank you. That's interesting.
Something to look at at home when you're bored. But it's it's good useful information to compare year to year, you know, see what we've had.
And the breakdown of what they are, that's that's a it's kind of neat to see.
Yeah. And that's uh, let's see. That fourth page there, um the defense and arrest summer report, that's generated through um a website called iCrime. Uh, so when we submit data, our incident based reporting stuff to the feds, it all gets, uh, I have to go to this website, it's called iCrime. That's where I pulled this report up of. And now there's probably twelve or fifteen different reports that I can pull from that. But I think this is probably the most important one for us. And then the rest of these sheets here, um, those are from the records management software that we that we use with the sheriff's office. So that's where I came from. I did all of that in just a short amount of time today.
Well, I think it's important to know our badge of business.
Yeah.
Well, it's nice. I I see you guys on control a lot. I mean, I see the vehicles around town a lot. I think that helps.
Uh, absolutely it does.
The people who are thinking about causing trouble, they don't know where you guys are. Then all of a sudden, you're up there, comes the car down the road. So I think that helps a lot.
I agree.
And I know to watch my speed coming up more.
Any other questions for the chief? Let's move on to number eight, discuss for possible approval of machinery purchase.
Okay, I'm back again. Okay, I get yeah, three beds for a mini excavator. Believe is a very important tool for us. And the only thing that might would change different if possible is I decided to maybe keep our backhoe for an extra year just for loading sand when the other machines are out cleaning snow. And I'm not sure how it's all gonna work out, so I'd like to keep it a year just to see. I'd hate to get rid of it and then think, oh, I wish we would have kept that, you know, for them giving us fourteen thousand, it's gonna be hard to replace something for that kind of money. So until we see how things work out, I'd like to do that. But uh each of the quotes here, obviously, you can see that uh Mid Country is the lowest. And they have one that is on the lot. Uh, Star, they're unknown. When they will get one and Case would uh would be around in May. They got a stock order coming, but uh they're quite a bit higher as you can see on this. And the Sani, that's the same brand we rented for down on Mental Three. So it was a proven machine. This one's naturally quite a bit smaller. And if you look at the years of warranty on it, that's pretty good for a machine where it's five years, isn't it? Yeah, five year, no trip charge, all service done on site. So I mean, they come to us, we don't haul nowhere. So that's pretty much unheard of in the construction industry anyway.
And they've got one in stock, right?
Yeah.
You guys are committing, I mean, that's the one you were using, right?
Yeah, only larger scale, of course, but I, yep, same uh same brand.
It's at the same place that you leased the bigger one from?
Yep, yep. They're out of Waterloo.
Thirteen foot digged out, that's that. The sufficient, you think?
Yeah, we we have no business going any deeper than that without the proper shoring and stuff. We don't, we don't have that, so.
Did you ever have them come down? Did you ever have any need for repairs or anything on the one, the one that you used on the grave?
No, no, nothing ever did break on. Only thing I broke on that was a mirror. That was me. But no, we had no repairs done while we had it, so.
Are you are you more apt to go with that one? Because Star equipment, is that a comparable one you'd be interested in? Um, I'm just looking at price wise. We're giving us a lot more for the we're giving us quite a bit more for the Bobcat than Country, which makes the price, if you eliminate the case.
Still about uh twenty, almost twenty-nine hundred dollars more expensive?
I did uh call Mid Country today and was leaning on them a little bit. I was able to get another seven hundred and fifty dollars towards the Bobcat out of them. But uh no, as far as uh there would be nothing wrong with uh Star's equipment, but they were talking like probably more like metal to end of twenty-four before. They have some orders they're dribbling in, but they don't, they won't give them a timeline, so.
Kind of like the uh Skidmoor too, wasn't it? Wasn't they looking at maybe twenty-four?
Just luckily, Titan had one coming in on uh stock that we were able to snag that, but.
I guess I just want to echo Jay's recommendation because the Sani does have more warranty on it. It's ready to mobilize out and ready to put it to use as soon as it gets here.
As far as that Bobcat, I don't, I don't know what they'd do on an auction site for sure. That's always an option too, but that's just, it's pretty old and it's just hard to say what it's gonna take the right person, probably a smaller one. Uh, the eight-five, but it's a model two thousand, yeah.
It was, it came with a sewer plant for dumping sludge into.
Well, the next question goes to Steve, how we pay for it?
Um, Sandy and I have a strategy to pay for this. And that shouldn't cause a problem. We've been able to save enough in the other proprietary funds. And uh to purchase this, I think we were gonna take this out of compost, stormwater, excuse me. So it's sitting there. And that's something that we can definitely use for storm or whatever project we need to tear down houses or water main repairs or whatever.
In buying this piece of equipment, um obviously, we're not gonna load this wherever we need to. Have we considered a trailer um for purchase to get this anywhere needs to go?
Um, yeah, that has crossed my mind, but I really didn't wanna look too much for a trailer until we gotta know what the footprint is and I didn't know what we'd end up with. But my thoughts were to kind of watch uh hopefully like the state sales and gov deals and see if we can pick one up. It don't have to be none. Yeah.
But would you think of getting something that would hold both pieces somewhere or just one at a time?
Probably just, well, depends what you end up with. Two would be great, but hopefully, probably shooting for one, but depends on what we can find.
Yeah.
But
But I think he's right. We need to get a trailer around here.
You can buy, and what's the weight on this thing? I paid, I paid four for mine. I mean, it's it's a fourteen or fourteen thousand pound trailer.
I'll probably go towards like a flat deck, but dual tandems and then I pull for the dump truck probably.
Cause I really eight trees maybe or something like that.
I really don't have a good enough truck to be yanking that thing down the bumper.
Right.
I can bump away on the road.
Might be using an excavator to pick the truck up. But until until we figure out what, I mean, I I got plenty of stuff to mobilize this thing, wherever we want to go.
I was just curious if there was something that had been forecasted.
Yeah.
Passed it out.
Yeah.
We're definitely on the right track, I think.
I think we need a motion to uh put our department go ahead and proceed with buying this uh machine from Mid Cotton.
All motion to approve moving forward with Mid Country.
Sir, a second to that. Seconded further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you very much. Christmas in January.
I won't be back for a while.
Uh, number nine, review the thirteen oh six Sixth Avenue property inspection. Steve, do you want to fill them in on what you and Mike talked about?
Yes, um, Mike said he he could be available if anybody wanted to ask any questions about it. Uh, he recommended to Rusty that sister some joists up to those ones that were, the joists aren't bad, they're just maybe not tall enough. And um and then they had the right idea with the beam across there. They just didn't have it maybe anchored as well as it could have been in the picture. It is kind of hard to tell what that looks like from the picture though. It's just a dark cellar, so no offense to Mike's photography skills.
Has Mike relayed this to Rusty?
I I know that they've communicated, Rusty talked to me today. Do you mean, um, I uh haven't been feeling well, so I was trying to rest at home and work from home. So I told, I called uh Rusty about this. And uh we went, we went over what the intentions were behind this. And he had questions about he thought that it was passed, that the inspection passed. And um I told him that there were a couple of council members that acknowledged that the report said that it didn't look like it had deteriorated. But also that at the same time, it had been mentioned in the initial report. So that the council uh would like to see that beefed up a little bit there in that room. And uh he said he didn't under, he just kind of maintained that he didn't understand why, if it passed, he had just continued doing stuff to it. So I tried to explain it to him as well as I could.
Well, passage is based on the council, but not on the fact the inspector gives you.
Right, that was just his comment.
Is a nuisance property, it comes to this group. And if they don't approve it, it's still a nuisance property. So he's gotta get pi to five people sitting in this room.
So I relayed to him what my understanding of what Mike thought needed to happen with the adding of sistering on the joists and adding another support beam and uh
You guys want us to give Mike a
I mean, I guess I would like to hear out of out of him why he decided to double back on what he stated previously.
Yeah, the confusing part is where it says all outstanding items are completed with the exception of one, two, and three.
So then they're not all complete.
Well.
Well, and if you look up, if you look, if you go up to this paragraph right here, it it specifically states it out plain and simple. There is some poor support for two of these joists which need corrected. And then when he went back through the house on the thirteenth, they weren't correct. They weren't correct, corrected and he passed the house.
Well, there's that sentence that says the investor, the inspector recommended to the owner that additional. Shoring be added to Boeing floor joists, and if this wasn't done, they should be monitored periodically. So I can see why. Rusty's confused by it because I, I think that sentence that I just read is where Mike kind of.
And I guess that's where we're going, or I'm going with my confusion is there's poor support or yeah, there's poor support for two of these choices which needs corrected. And then he says. So which, which.
Well, and here's, to add to that, you know, let's, let's talk about it just for a second. Who's gonna monitor it?
Right.
I mean, are we gonna pay an inspector again? To go in and monitor this and a third time and a fourth time and a fifth time?
No, I took it that, that Mike was saying to the property owner that. Since there hadn't been any additional. Um. Failure that this should be monitored periodically by the owner. I was just putting it on him, I think. But it is confusing and it's a question for Mike. I don't think for Rusty really.
No.
What did Mike intend by that?
Would you like me to call him?
Yeah, let's get him on the phone.
See if I can get him here. Hey, Mike, um I'm in the council meeting and I was going to ask for your permission to put you on speakerphone in, in the council meeting. All right, if you have any trouble hearing anyone, just let me know, okay?
I will.
Okay, uh Mike is on the line.
Would you like, I lost the question. Okay, can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, I can.
Okay, on March tenth of twenty-two, uh you did an inspection. And I'm looking at. Believe the sixth paragraph is start, uh do you have a report in front of you by chance?
Well, I'm trying to get it pulled up here.
Okay.
Was this one thirteen oh six?
Uh, yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, page six.
Uh, paragraph six is, six is what I have.
Oh, okay, paragraph six, hang on here. Page three.
It starts in the northwest basement room is where it starts. In that paragraph.
Yep.
Okay, um so within that paragraph, uh it states there is poor support for these two. Joists which needs corrected. Um, and then I, then going into your December thirteenth twenty-two inspection. Um, it states the inspector recommended to the owner that additional shoring be added to the Boeing floor joists. And if this wasn't done, they should be monitored periodically. I'm just curious. As to why you stated it needs corrected and then reverted to monitor it periodically. What? What changed in that or why did you uh decide that factor versus needing to replace them?
Well, two, two things. I said something about tenants were occupied in the home first inspection. Uh and talked about sagging floor joists. And there hadn't been much change in them. So since that has happened, Steve and I had a conversation. And I got ahold of Rusty, right? I said, hey, look. I said, you know, I really think you should go in there and uh just run a, you know, a girder across there, post it up. Uh first sister of the joists, at least on one side. Uh, you know, catching most of the spam and then uh run our girder across there fast. Girder posted up and I said, I said, that, that'll be good. I said, I knew that there was some uh. Uh questions from council on it and I said, you know, and he agreed to do it. Uh, I don't know that he's been back yet. When I called him, he was on his way to Alabama for Christmas and said he was gonna take care of it after. He got back and he was gonna send Steve photographs of it, so. Uh, that's pretty much where we're at on it at this point.
So it is being corrected then?
It's supposed to be correct. Rusty agreed on the phone that that's what he would do and he would take pictures of that. And give pictures to Steve, so city council and the mayor can see it and just check it off the list.
Okay.
You know, it, that's just one of those homes where there's. The construction methodology isn't what we see today. You know, you're using native rough sod lumber. You know, spans are goofy and that's the sort of house there that, you know, probably most likely. There's always gonna be some sort of ongoing support that's gonna need to happen. Just because I, my guess is if I'd had a probe that I could probe down below there. I'm guessing a lot of that foundation may not even be below frost line, so. You know, it, it's always gonna be a work in progress, uh you know, as far as just, you know, taking looks at those little things. But uh structurally, you know, it's good and Rusty agreed to make that and take the pictures, so. Um, you know, I, I went the extra mile just asking to do it and said, you know, easiest way to get this resolved and get city council to sign off on it. Is do what we agreed upon and that's where we're at the process right now.
Any other questions, counsel? Is that a satisfactory answer if they have agreement that he has to send pictures back to Steve?
And then it will be approved.
And I would say.
Send a letter.
Yeah, probably Steve, send him a letter based on this conversation tonight and then also remind him that. The council has final say on, on inspection of, of nuisance property, that we send an inspector in. But we can make a determination. That may go above and beyond what the inspector actually. Does, but it sounds to me like Mike's done an excellent job here following up.
Yeah, when did, Steve, when did you call me? It was right before Christmas, I think it was like two days before. And, and I just decided, you know, uh let, let's get it put to bed and I caught Rusty on the way down there. And so I mean, it, it should be taken care of and trust me, folks, there are no bad questions. I don't take offense to anybody asking questions, so. It's, it's a, it's a double acting door. It swings both ways, so uh. I'm not insulted or anything like that if you ask me questions, so you know, I'm, I'm working for all of you. That's the bottom line.
Sounds good. Council's in agreement.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for making time out.
All right, everybody drive safe. It's still kind of slick out there. Did you guys get much snow that way or get more uh precipitation?
Just light.
Yeah, not a whole lot.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Thanks, thanks for your time.
What's that?
Thank, thanks for your time.
All right, thank you everyone.
Okay, so we're good to go. Send a letter to that one as a follow-up, Steve.
Yeah, I think I called Mike the next morning after our twenty-second, maybe.
Was there when you talked to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's move to agenda item number ten, discuss for possible approval of renewal of Class C liquor. Sales. Class C liquor license with Sunday sales and outdoor service for Jenny Bradshaw, American Legion, post number thirty-nine and. Ten oh eight, twelfth street, Bell Plain. I assume there's no problems there, right, Chief?
None.
Do we have a motion approving that renewal of their liquor license?
I make a motion to approve the renewal of Class C liquor sales, Class C liquor license with Sunday sales. Outdoor service for Jenny Bradshaw, American Legion.
Sir, a second to the. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? First, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Five zero. Discuss for possible approval of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales and outdoor services, Alcatrine. Mexican was seen located at two oh nine Seventh Avenue. There's gonna have been no problems there. So nobody's gone. Overboard on margaritas. Looking for. Looking for a motion on uh.
I move to approve a Class C liquor license with Sunday sales and outdoor service at Alcatrine.
Sir, a second.
A second.
Comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Sure missed Jeffrey. All opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. Discuss for possible approval and authorization to reduce the utility bill at sixteen fourteen eighth Avenue for a toilet stuffed open for an hundred. This toilet hidden in the basement or what?
Well, I was gonna, I mean. This is confirmed, this is.
Oh, I know why. Isn't it her mom's house?
That's what I was asking, but I don't think so. No, this is theirs.
Toilets can leak and not be noisy.
True.
There is, there's an extra room where nobody.
Well, when you say stuffed open. God, haven't you seen the commercial when the women's curtains are getting sucked down the toilet? Everything out of the bathroom. She goes, I don't care, I got warranty on it. Well, yeah, lady, not on that. When it sucks your whole bathroom down and you don't have warranty on it.
But with, with these, you know, broken pipes and, and leaks that were happening, I mean, are we confirming that these actually happen? Because this, this could have been an outside faucet for all we know. There's. I mean, we don't know, and I'm just bringing that up because. I think they need to be.
Well, who says the toilet has been fixed?
But, I mean.
You're asking for verification.
Well, we just, we, we don't know what these are for real.
They're only for real ones.
I mean, usually if it's an outside faucet, they fess up to that about somebody left their outside faucet.
Well, even if it was.
That's why they want the sewer forgiveness.
That's why they want the sewer forgiveness, regardless of that.
No, I, I just wanted to ask if, you know. Well, it's true.
I mean, this one isn't very big. It's the type that where you'd say you're sure you want to use it one time for this, but.
Does our system find that once they use it or how does that work?
Actually puts in a comment on the account. One time credit. The choose chat.
Yeah, that they do that.
I thought so, but I just can't remember.
Yep, she, she does.
I guess a part of it is just. Belief in our citizens. They aren't uh.
Fund just.
They're only got a fund just once on this. So if somebody's in here looking, if somebody's in here looking for fifteen hundred dollars, we may be calling their plumber to find out.
Well, that's what they want. I'll make a motion to approve the utility credit at sixteen fourteen eighth Avenue.
Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries five zero. Discuss for possible approval and authorization to reduce the utility bill at five ten Thirteenth Street for a broken kitchen sink pipe. Three ninety-seven two.
Now, this is like twice as much as the previous one, volume wise and dollar wise and how does the kitchen? Sink pipe break and you not know it?
Where's the water?
Where's the water? That was my question.
Yeah.
Your cabinet.
Well, well, this, this could be a situation where. She didn't know how to go to the basement to shut the main off and she might not have had valves on her kitchen sink. Or it broke, or it broke the wall about. Three hundred and ninety dollars. Well, she probably, well, she might not work. She might not work.
It's kind of one of them. I don't know precisely when this happened, but sometimes when the water lines freeze. And then they thaw out, they're ruptured and then there's a really big leak.
Top more than a meter.
Yeah. And you don't know until it falls out.
Kelly Bennett.
See that video? Need a motion on this one.
Only a motion to approve the reduced utility bill for fifteen ten Thirteenth Street.
Sir, a second to that. I'll second it. Been moved and seconded, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries five zero. Uh, discuss for possible approval, resolution twenty-three oh one oh one, a resolution approving the transfer of funds. Uh, I'll just turn that over to Sandy to explain to you.
Um, before we can transfer money between funds. That we get council approval for whatever reason that transfer is for. Um, when the auditors were here, we went through TIP. Um, my understanding of it wasn't quite accurate, so I was moving money. As it came in from TIP to debt service. When I found out that that's not the thing to do, you move it when debt service needs it, not just because TIP has it. So uh, excuse me. Um, the auditors helped, helped me to create a spreadsheet to figure out what we needed to do for this fiscal year to get us back. On track with the right amount in. TIP and debt service for TIP, so um this amount is the amount that both they and I have agreed is the right amount to move for this fiscal year. And then we'll get back on track with after budgeting for it for next year.
Questions?
She'll always get this type of resolution every year. What I'm gonna try and do. Um, once we get budgeting done this year is when we approve the budget itself, I'm gonna put. The expected transfers right on it, so I don't have to bring them back all year long. I don't have to bring back something if it's a change.
Sir, a motion to approve this resolution.
I move to approve resolution twenty-three oh one oh one, approving the transfer of funds.
Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries five zero. Move to. These appointments, discuss for approval, appointments to the airport commission, historical preservation commission. Prove the hometown current district inspector for the city of Bell Plain. Uh, I will just do these. Uh, I will just do these one at a time. So it's officially done correctly, asking you to appoint, reappoint Lady Wida to the Airport Commission. Asking you to reappoint Mitch Malcolm to the Historical Preservation Commission. Asking you to appoint Jackie McDermott to the Historical Preservation Commission to replace existing member. Donna Green, they turned to expire January, January of twenty twenty five. And of course, we have to approve an official newspaper and, uh, the clerk's reasoning on staying with hometown current is they have a much better due date policy on stuff, official documents that we have to have in print. So that's why they are proposing we stay with current. Let's start with Lady Wida. Right, get a motion to reappoint Lady Wida.
I move to reappoint Lady Wida to the Airport Commission.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Historical Preservation Commission, has it ever met?
No.
But I'm told we have to have it because.
We're gonna meet now. When we have a museum meeting, Jackie's on the board, we'll just invite Andy and we'll have a meeting. We'll, we'll tackle this one for.
I'm told that we have to have the Historical Preservation Commission. There are certain federal grants you apply for that if you don't have a Historical Preservation Commission. Doesn't say highly active, it doesn't say very active, it doesn't say one step above terminal. It just says you have to have one.
Easy, easy mayor, easy.
We're gonna have one, so now that I find out they're actually possibly.
This is gonna be a vote like the House for the Speaker.
We're never gonna get one.
I know, exactly.
So, I'll take these in, these two in one motion. So give me a, a motion to reappoint Mitch Malcolm to the Historical Preservation Commission and the same time appoint Jackie McDermott to be a new member to the Historical Preservation Commission.
I'll move to approve Mitch Malcolm to the Historic Preservation Commission and Jackie McDermott to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Sir, second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero.
I could vote present. I have to abstain? I'm voting for Jackie. Have to vote for Jackie.
All I had ever thought about put that, you shouldn't be voting for you yourself.
I vote for Jackie. Present for me.
All right, record it that way. Uh, approve hometown current as official newspaper about plain, discussion on that?
I didn't realize there were part of this that I just noticed that.
They were bought by the Gazette, maybe a month after the start of.
Because I didn't know they existed.
Do I have a motion on this one?
I move to approve the hometown current as the official newspaper for the city of Bell Plain for twenty twenty three.
Sir, second.
I'll second it.
Questions, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Steve and I talked about this with the snowstorms we had during the holiday season, times that our guys uh, should have had off, we had it in snowplows, I think the only day that we didn't have a snowplow was Christmas Day. And so we'd like you to consider one time, comp time offer for during the hot, from this holiday storm. Uh, of twenty hours for each one of those guys, and Lance is ten because he was sick the first day that we were there. Uh, and it's a use it or lose it, comp time, uh, and they have to have it used by August thirty first twenty three. Questions?
Seems fair.
Yeah, it's darn cold.
Well, I just think guys are, now they're planning their Christmas time and all that stuff around it. We're going, God, guys, you get that. I mean, now somebody will say to you, well, they get paid fairly well, don't they? Well, yeah, they do, but if you lose your family Christmas, what you're getting paid hourly doesn't take that back, and especially if you have grandkids and that kind of stuff, uh, now.
You only get so many of those, you only get so many of those holidays.
Well, and that only happens if it's their second Christmas, it's only their second Christmas one time.
So how many of the roads were like drifting shut? Ninth Avenue was a beast, right across from my house. And I come out there and clean that out. You guys worked on that several times. Now that was drifting bad.
The first day we did Main Street three, three times.
Yeah.
Just kept. Sidewalk on the north side just kept drifting back.
Yeah.
So we're asking for a one time comp time offering for our workers, discussion?
Seems fair.
Motion.
Make a motion to approve a one time, uh, comp hours for the city workers.
Sir, second.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. City administrators report update on current project.
All right, I already briefed you guys on Rusty Wright and Mike's call. Uh, on, I just wanted to thank the guys for everything they've been doing, namely most recently Friday night, uh, at the end of the day, we had a water main break. It was, it just leaked for a few hours and we lost thirty thousand gallons. It was pretty big. And, uh, everybody was ready to go by the time the emergency locates were in. Jay had the concrete breaker breaking and the guys were out turning valves and um, were able to get it all repaired, um, with our own um, equipment, um, with the new skid loader and, uh, it worked flawless late.
How would we know where that break was and what, how, what happened there? Who, who discovered that?
I don't recall. Yeah, yeah, you.
I mean, where the break was, what we were.
I had Al go out right around and Nick was riding around and I went to Carquest and I just turned down eight and I just, you know, watching around and just, I don't know why, there was a little bit of water running, it's like, I didn't know if it was snow or what.
These things are melting that day too.
And it was just starting to bubble and it just hit surface, but it was going in the sanitary first. And then it finally got up to the road and just a couple of bubbles. It just.
When we took that sanitary lid off, it was just waterfall.
It was just free.
So you see it bubbling out of the road then or something?
Yeah, it just started running down the road. So it was just free people that.
How long was it from when you found it to when you guys had?
Uh, found it about two thirty three and.
We had to wait two hours for the emergency locate.
And then we were done pretty much about seven thirty, we were turning water back on.
Pretty good, I knew you didn't start till four or later.
Yeah.
And a year ago, folks, that wouldn't have happened. We'd have been stuck losing water.
How much, we were lost a lot because we lost thirty thousand and.
Nick found it about right after dinner. The trend chart showed that like about eleven is when it probably broke. And then, so like eleven and we had it off probably hour and a half, two hours. We had the valves dead.
Yeah, we had killed.
So.
Waiting for the.
You know.
Locates to come through. It was a big.
Three, well, you probably had four, four or five hours and you lost thirty thousand. So.
If we would have had to call in a crew.
Yeah, if we'd had to call in a crew, this is a date that was on.
Friday night, yeah, let's go, guys, who wants to come to Bell Plain?
Holiday.
Yeah.
On a holiday week, well, don't come.
And then we had rain forecasted for Monday, Tuesday. So they did a fantastic job. Uh, I think that the, everybody can be really proud of their efforts. Um, the water, wastewater guys started, um, meeting, reading water meters today. They, uh, got a quick tutorial and then they hit the ground running with that. And, um, they're already seeing ways that we can improve that process, so that'll become more streamlined over time. Um, we've been having some trouble with well three in Northway. Well, I had contacted them, um, to come to town last week and they were able to make it here yesterday. Um, they weren't able to get to well three, so they went and worked on well five because we're still in the process of decommissioning well five. That's the well that's on someone else's land over there in that hunting ground. So I'm hoping we'll have some more answers on that today. They needed to scope out well three to see, we were getting a little sand in the meter. So, um, curious to see why that's happening. I sent out, um, a rough draft of the second appeal to FEMA via Homeland Security for the welcome sign that was damaged in Duray Joe um, on Highway thirty. And I also sent a rough draft to Leon for roads and bridges to go to arbitration with Homeland Security and he's gonna look it over and I will be sending those out as soon as he gets back to me with critiques on those.
That's the whole package of roads and bridges?
Um, it's kind of shaking out to like Minno Creek where it had a big scope and then they kind of said, this is what we're gonna do. And, um, primarily it's for Twenty First Street and then some other um, bridge approaches. So there are bridges like, um, where, uh, Gene Severson lives, there's a box culvert there and it's got, um, chips on both sides with the box culvert's concrete. And then if you notice on either side of it, straight down the street from you, it's got a hump where the hammered on it. There's another area like that, uh, by the hole number two at the country club, by the old, where the Pettit House used to be. Um, and then the, the, the big one that I'm really pushing for is the Tenth Avenue um, culvert by the existing bus barn. Um, it took a significant hit with the, um, Duray Joe, the school had staged some stuff, debris there and, um, there was some debris removal, then that's where the, that was the equipment to be staged, so that's where it was kept. Um, just loads that, um, too large for that culvert. It was a culvert that just kind of started collapsing after the Duray Joe. Um, and if you go down that road, you can see that there's kind of a hump on the west side, so don't drive on the west side of that road, please. Um, so they're either going to reject it or accept it and we'll have to go to the next step. But we're winding down into the amount of times that we can ask them for stuff and, um, I'm just trying to be optimistic that we're gonna get some stuff because to fix Twenty First Street, the reason it was so bad is because that didn't have any trees on it and that was a main road for Ninth Avenue, Eighth Avenue, Seventh Avenue for people to haul. Um, because it was an open road and it just broke down very quickly with that kind of traffic. So we'll see what happens. Once Leon gets, goes back to me, then I'll send him off to, uh, Chris Spencer with Homeland Security and then we'll go to the next step. Leon or Chris?
Uh, Leon.
Leon is always optimistic that we're gonna get something. Um, we've, I think we've had a pretty good success rate with Leon. I think we would have got nothing if it wasn't for help from Leon. Uh, it's just too much to manage and, you know, just like the Minno Creek project, um, that would have never happened and that Jake could tell you how wound up and pounded and all that stuff was down through there is just damn, damn after damn after damn down through there he had to take out. Um, so I had a conference call with Leon and Chris with Homeland Security and Chris is trying to help us find a pathway to get some kind of relief back on that. Um, does anybody else have any questions about anything?
What do we have?
I emailed Steve Oberbrockling with that on that, uh, yesterday. He got back to me late today, I checked his email, so we can have a couple of approaches. The electrical engineer that we had to have for the quotes made a typo of one letter or one number. One instead of three on one of the applications and it failed us, so, um, that was a bummer, so I've been fighting that ever since. Um, it was just one, one number. Um, they so we have an option to take this through Homeland Security and we also have an option to do, um, DR funding, but the DR funding, there's not a whole lot there, so, um, I don't, we're gonna just try to throw a wide net and see if anything happens.
Can you give him back everything he asked for?
He asked, Steve Oberbrockling, he had, he was asking specifically for city hall as a EOC. So during the emergency, the city hall was an emergency operating center and here and then it, the community center, then back here once all the people were kind of lurking around, we didn't know, you know, we stayed things down there, so once we had the generator back. Right, so, but for FEMA and Homeland Security, they wanted to know how much our EOC budget is a year and like this is a permanent emergency operating center, you know, we're not in a constant state of emergency. Don't have a budget for EOC operations.
So what if we turned in our police budget?
So those are all questions that I've asked him. I said, okay, here's how big the building is, here's, you know, there's a difference, so, um, if we go that route, that could mess up because we don't have an EOC budget in place. Um, we never have, I don't know. Um, is a line item anyway, I mean, we, we have the heat on in here, this is the command center, the, in the emergency services next door and, uh, so it's, the target keeps moving. So it's trying to stay, stay on track and stay up with it and if, if I can't provide him with an EOC. if I can't provide him with an EOC budget, I don't really know what I can provide him with because we don't have an EOC line item. That's some, and I don't know if that's something we should do, I, I don't I don't know how to approach that.
So what about the fire department? That's gotta be in the emergency operations. So their whole bunch would have to be listed.
Yeah, so I'm still trying to navigate through this, but like we, we're in the process of getting the DR grant for the Moore Building. That comes out of a very small pot of money, most of it was allocated to Lynn County and then there's a portion that was allocated to Marshall Tame and Ben County, was a significantly lower amount. And we're already gonna be getting a pretty good sized amount for the DR grant, it all gets approved, so. I am trying to still push it through Homeland Security because I just don't know with the amount of money that our generators are gonna cost, it would chew up, I think, almost everything that is available. And part of the, the struggle is when FEMA was asking us to get these quotes and everything. We had to have it engineered and we had to have all these things have, take place and we already had the sizes of the generators that we need because we already had them and you know, that type of thing drove the cost above the price and, I think a generator is like fifty or sixty thousand bucks, I can't remember, and like the electrical and engineering was as much as the generator. So it really drove the price up. Some of the project we can self-perform now if Jay and the guys want to pour the concrete slab and stuff like that and run concrete and things like that, but it's pretty frustrating actually. So when we get done here tonight, like I said, I saw that I got an email from Steve. So I'm gonna check, check on that and see what the next step for that process.
Well, let's stay on that one. Questions, council? Got one you think would be the slam dunk, give us. No, you can go take our trees off the creek, we'll get your money for that, but all generator to run your police department during.
They rejected all three, they, they rejected the fire department, the well field in City Hall because of the one number. We're working through it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna say there's no appeal process to correct the number if you got a typo.
Uh, Esco. They're an electrical company. And the reason, I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, I'll explain. So all of City Hall is single phase electric. But the way that it has to come into the building because there were, I, I don't know why they would have done this, but this was done way back in the day, the fifties or whenever building was built, they brought it into the building, building is three phase and then they split it out into single phase. So it's not how you So for whatever reason, I know when Bill and I were, Bill Walton and I were looking on how to try to get the generator hooked up here, it was like, what is going on here? So it's, the, the well field is three phase, the fire station, single phase. And City Hall is single phase, but it's three, it's three phase coming in, so that's where your generator hooked up.
If we go through this whole thing and get nothing, what if we buy portables? Like what we had?
Then that's an option. I, I really don't want to give up on this, I really don't.
No, but at some point, because you're past another summer, well, we don't have generators to protect this building or to protect the fire department or to protect our wells.
Yeah, I understand. The one for the well. For instance, when we had the bad weather coming in, I had one on standby in case the power went out because that's on the very edge, so I had one kind of set aside for us, a two hundred KW in Des Moines and they just said, well, you're gonna have to come get it, like, that's fine. But
So what's one like that cost?
They cost more on wheels. I, I haven't, yeah. So there were strategies that I approached it with, you know, there's no natural gas or LP out at the well field, other than the very high, the extremely high pressure North American pipeline or whatever it is that comes into town. So I thought that it would be smarter for us to get diesel generators because in an emergency or a tornado or something a line energy, energy could just turn off all of the gas to the town like that and we wouldn't have a generator at all. Whereas, you know, there's usually a lot of diesel around either griders or a farmer if we had to. But the, the, the style of generator was actually more economical, there were fixed diesels.
Any other questions for the administration?
So I guess the, I don't know if I answered your question, the plan is if something happens in the meantime is just to rent some again.
Yeah, but if we face another situation, we know what that means in trying to rent generators. We were on the lucky end of that last one. We can be on the unlucky side of it, not be able to get a generator here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm plenty perturbed with the electrical guys because after the third time I had to have him quoted, he's like, well, if I have to do this again, I'm charging and I'm just like anyway. I'm not paying for a quote.
Okay, anything else, council? Mayor's report, I'm gonna appoint Councilperson Pack as the mayor pro ten. She has been in that position since eight years ago. Let's talk about cards for Waterville, Sandy, you wanna explain that item to them?
So when we had to order our most recent order, the little yellow Waterville card, we were notified that the price is gonna be going up. Apparently colored paper is becoming increasingly hard yet. Making it expensive, no big shit. So the increased cost is gonna be about a hundred and fifty dollars a year, roughly. They also mentioned that we could go to white cards. Basically exactly the same cards that we have, except instead of them being yellow, they would be white. That'd get me back, get us back to almost flush, it saves about a hundred and forty dollars a year over what we would have currently paid prior to the hundred and fifty dollar increase, so. Just didn't know anybody thought of that, you know, the yellow cards kind of stick out in the mail. Changes hard with the way white cards not be able to be as found, found as well, post office don't care.
Change is good. But on top it has, it says pretty big font, Bell Plain, right on it. So it's not like it's smaller print, so.
Wouldn't look any different, it'd just be a different color. We do have probably I told them to go ahead and send, this was the last order they could hold the old price on. So I thought, well, leave it at yellow, no price change yet. So that gives us a couple, probably a couple more months of yellow where we could start.
Start putting the word out.
Communicating that white will be a
You can all place bets and you'll complain first.
I'm okay with white.
Yeah, I think you're fine with that.
They actually used to be white when I was the water.
Great, we'll move that direction.
White it is. Remind the council, your first budget workshop is set for Monday, January ninth, twenty twenty three, in council chambers and city hall. At six thirty, providing, did you get the stuff you need for?
Not yet. I talked for a day. I thought she was gonna leave today, but I checked about five thirty, it's not on the website yet, on the so I don't know if it takes a day to get there, she sent me all the tip information. So I can email her again tomorrow and recall her.
So is this putting you at too much of a, a stress level to get this stuff, because you gotta have it out to the council on Friday?
No.
Council won't see it until they come in here. So it's been what we've done?
I don't know, don't remember. Yeah, probably, I guess we just talk about it in here.
Well, if you
Yeah, you can move it, because you're not gonna get it Friday. I'm probably gonna be in here all week.
Leave that up to council, we can look for different dates.
Following Monday?
Well, I just don't think that's fair, it works.
Well, I'm not worried about that, but what are you waiting for? I don't have any valuations out of county yet.
So the max valuation of the whole town, that tells us how much we're gonna have.
I don't really know.
It's point A, we've got all the points.
We can budget a lot of stuff, we just don't know how much money we're gonna have to spend.
What's the latest we can move it to?
Well, at the second January meeting, we will have to set the max up here.
So we have to have this before the eighteen.
Oh wait, Monday is the sixteenth? Yeah, it's part of the King Day.
You'd be okay on the sixteen?
Yes.
How about the rest of you?
I think I'm okay. I'm okay.
You're okay.
I'm okay. Let's move, let's move.
I'm off that day too, so if we wanted to bump it to earlier, we can do that too.
So let's move it to the sixteenth at six o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine.
Anything else?
So the ninth is no.
Ninth is no.
Cause I'll be here, everyone watch.
That makes up for the one.
Exactly, I'll just sit here.
Have a seat and sit here for
You go out and help shovel stuff.
Well, I don't see anything else on here, folks, so there are questions from the council. I'll entertain a motion for it. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Coz, motion carries, five zero, you're out at eight. Are we off the air?